All right, it is seven o'clock, looks like we're here. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the September ninth, 2021 Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask the town administrator to please read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I will amend or approve the agenda and then a period of public comment. And then on the consent agenda, there's a payroll warrant and draft minutes of August 12th and August 26th of 2021. The second up, the second item is update on intermunicipal agreements with Framingham and Natick with Greg Corbo from KP Law as town council. Item three, acceptance of FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award with Zach Ward, Fire Chief. Item four, COVID-19 update. Item five, acceptance of OPEB Declaration of Trust with Heidi Doyle Treasurer. And item six, consideration of bond anticipation notes by Heidi Doyle Treasurer. Item seven, consideration of a draft request for proposal for temporary office space for council on aging with Sue Keller, her COA Director. Item eight, consideration of voting to stay a single precinct for town elections, Jackie Morris, Town Clerk. Item nine, consideration of joint appointment to the planning board with Frank Hoak to expire at the 2022 Annual Town Election. And Robert Wolf to expire at the 2022 Annual Town Election. And consideration of appointment of Assistant Town Collector Pam Douse, Town Collector. Appointment of Tish Gogan. Consideration of appointment of Director of Veterans Services, Veterans Grave Officer and Veterans Burial Officer with Diana Howick for a term to expire April 1st, 2022. The last item is consideration of routine business with select board reports and town administrator report. And then the board will go into executive session for three items. Item one is meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3, 6, and 7, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam 449 Massachusetts 444 year 2007 to discuss 31 Hunting Lane. And Igor, Igor Labarsky at L B, Town of Sherburne Land Court Action Number 21, Miscellaneous P S 000193 Spicer. Item two, to meet with town council and the Chair of the Conservation Commission to discuss a complaint letter dated August 16th, 2021 from Jonathan Hodgson Walker and Lisa Hodgson Walker of Silverwood Farm LLC against the Conservation Commission pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A, 1, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam 449 Massachusetts 444 year 2007. Item three, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the Chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board in the town. And the Chair does so declare to discuss the Town Library pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction BD Cam 449 Massachusetts 444 year 2007.
Thank you very much, David. I have one request for public comment. Does anyone have any other requests for public comment? I received one first. Okay, anything else? I'd like to recognize Sean Cole. Are you on here, Sean? There's so many pages of people here.
He's here, we can find him.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to update everyone. We, in case you didn't know, or if you were living under a rock, we've we had an emergency job that initially closed Route 16 and we're about half done. We had a culvert that collapsed and basically took the road surface right out from under itself. We were able to get a contractor moved in yesterday and started working and we're we're optimistic the weather's going to clear enough to hopefully finish the job tomorrow. And we'll be paving pretty late. We may not get the road open till Saturday morning, but we're hoping to get cleared out of there with the machines.
All right. Yeah, that was quite a thing. A few of us have been on site for that. And you know, the road was pretty much undermined right into the, right to the center line, right to the yellow line. I think we're actually quite lucky that nothing tragic happened there. A truck didn't just fall right in or whatever it is. So if anyone's wondering, it was an emergency as bad as I've ever seen. So good job, Sean, and nice response.
Thank you.
From the pictures, I was surprised that nobody did fault like that. Nothing did collapse some of that. That was crazy.
It was close.
How did you find it?
One of my operators saw it when he was on a machine because he was, you know, it tops out at about 10, 12 miles an hour. So that's when you catch a lot of stuff. And then I, as I was getting ready to respond up there, I didn't realize it was that bad, obviously. Another resident called, the road started sinking. He saw it, but the road started sinking and it was, it was basically just holding itself up. You could have, you could have stuffed a Volkswagen in the hole under the road that you couldn't see. So at that point, it wouldn't have supported a large truck, maybe even not even a bus.
Yeah, yeah, we caught it and you know, like I said, it looks like it was being repaired well. So definitely good job to everyone involved there.
Eric, I didn't ask for a public announcement, but since Sean mentioned, I just wanted to give kudos to Sean and Eddie made everyone for the Pine Hill Access Road. If you haven't had a chance to drive up there, the work they did in three or so months is phenomenal. It's really allowed the school to open up and I don't have kids at school, but I think we should definitely recognize the incredible effort that they pulled off. Thank you, Sean. And I didn't see how they may here tonight, but the whole team.
I'm actually looking for the picture. I can't find it. The picture that you sent me, I was gonna like put it up and show people, but no, it's good enough. I can see it maybe posted on Nextdoor or something. All right. Without any further ado, I'll move on to agenda and item number one, consent agenda. Do I have any motions or questions relative to consent agenda?
So I moved to approve consent agenda with a comment that I've been working with Diane to fix some typos on some of the minutes and she's going to take care of that. I think she said on Monday.
Okay, very good. So I have motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann, you're on mute, by the way, Mary Ann.
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
All right. For our agenda, item number two, I'm gonna ask Paul, I'm gonna ask Jeff to kick me into the waiting room and don't forget to bring me back out.
We'll think about it. Ciao. Okay, agenda item number two is the update on intermunicipal agreements for Framingham and Natick and Greg, I'm assuming you're gonna lead off.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Greg Corbo. From the law firm of KP Law, I have been representing the town with respect to the negotiation of intermunicipal agreements with Framingham and Natick for the extension of water and sewer lines to serve the new Pulte construction at Coolidge Crossing that's being in development. So as you are aware, the project is heavily dependent on the extension of public water from the, from the town of Framingham and public sewer from, from the town of Natick. And we've been working with attorneys from both communities as well as special counsel for Pulte Construction to put together the required documentation in order to get this project off the ground. So with respect to Framingham and the provision of water, as I think you've discussed in the past, this is a bit more complicated an issue than the extension of the sewer line because the M W R A has a policy that prevents extension of its system into non-member communities to serve private developments. So the way we're trying to accommodate that is by developing a new entity that's going to be called the North Sherburne Water District. And in order to do that, we will need special legislation to create the district, which will be an independent body politic in and of itself. It will be self-governing and its purpose will be to operate that portion of the water system through the purchase of water from Framingham for purposes of this development and a few other properties in the immediate area. Properties that are vulnerable to contamination as well as several properties that are already connected to the Framingham water supply. So we're working on preparing that special legislation. I've seen an initial draft of it. I've sent some comments back to Pulte's attorneys and they're continuing to work on that. My understanding is that this has gone in front of the Framingham City Council, which has now sent it on to its finance committee. And I believe the finance committee is scheduled to meet to discuss the project later in the month. So on your end, you know, there's, there's really nothing for you to do at this point other than to wait for the special legislation to be ready for your review. And then at which time we'll ensure that, that the special legislation meets all of the conditions that you were concerned about and then get it ready for presentation to town meeting. At this point, we're looking at submission of both the water and sewer agreements and special acts at the, the town meeting in the spring. So that's the Framingham side of it. The, the Natick side of it is, is in a similar situation. My understanding is that Natick and Pulte are still trying to work out the, the terms of mitigation measures that, that will be given from Pulte to Natick in exchange for the extension of the sewer line. But although it's a simpler process, because we don't need the district, the steps are pretty much the same. We still need special legislation because under the general laws, chapter 40, section 4A, an intermunicipal agreement between two communities is limited in term to 25 years. And in this context, it doesn't make any sense to have an intermunicipal agreement for only 25 years. So we plan to go to the legislature to get approval for an initial 50-year term and then additional terms to be extended at the discretion of the parties. So, so that's in process as well. And you know, we'll, we'll end up tying this all together with agreements that memorialize the terms for service for both water and sewer. And again, we expect that these, this will all be brought to town meeting in the spring. Representative Linsky is on board and he has agreed to sponsor the bills in the, in the state legislature. And you know, once it gets there, obviously we can't predict, but I can't see why if all three communities are supportive of this, that, that the legislature would want to stand in the way. In addition to that, you know, we'll need approval from the M W R A, approval from D E P, likely an approval from MassDOT. So there, there's still a ways to go. But you know, we are on track and things seem to be moving in a positive direction. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Well, I have a quick one for you and it's more my ignorance. So this Pulte, you mentioned Pulte and all the negotiations is the, I can't remember the fame, is it the McDowell firm that's building the rental units on Coolidge Street? My question is, I'm assuming that this agreement, they're not necessarily a party to it, that the, just Pulte will be a party to the agreement and the McDowell just be connected to it for the rental units. Is that correct?
That, that's what my understanding is, yes.
Space, based on, by the way, Jeff.
Say, what's it called again?
Baystone.
Baystone, but is it a, was it McDowell family or something? No?
The McDowell family owns Baystone, yes.
All right, that's.
Name of the firm is Baystone.
I was off base, but not way off base. Okay, thank you. So Marion has, I'm gonna, just so everyone knows, I'm gonna have the select board speak first and then we'll invite members of the community to speak. So Marion, would you like to go first?
All right. Actually, my question was the same as just asked, and that's a good answer. I, I'm wondering so that we know how to respond to residents' questions about this. You mentioned a, a limited array of properties that would be covered by the water from Framingham. And I think people will want to know exactly which those are. And also, does the water district and the sewer connection overlap perfectly? That is, is every house being supplies water, being supplied water also hooked up to the sewer? Because it would make a difference on the, the water economy of the, of the area.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick, Greg.
Thank you. So I can certainly get to you a, a map that shows the properties that are expected to be connected to the water and the approximate boundaries of the suggested water district. And as I said before, the, these are known properties. In addition to this, these new developments, there are a number of properties, I believe it's eight, that are already connected to Framingham water. So they would be served. And then there is, there's another neighborhood that you know, is of concern with respect to an area of contamination. And so there was the thinking that those properties would be connected as well. I know that from my, my discussions with you that, you know, it was important that this district be very well-defined and limited in its scope. And so that's what we've been focusing on was only those connections and making sure that, that there's no opportunity or authority to expand the boundaries of the district without the, the specific consent of the Town of Sherburne. I do not believe, however, that sewer is planned to go to any of those other properties outside of these new developments. My understanding is that sewer is just going to be extended for the purpose of the new developments and not for these other properties that are outside.
I, I lift my hand up because I have a bit of a follow-on to that. At, at the, some point, actually, the last I heard about this, there was talk of installing a, a, call it a spigot, a potential connection at the the base of Meadowbrook Road so that Meadowbrook Road could be supplied if need be, if contamination occurred. So would the agreement have to cover Meadowbrook Road and what would trigger the opening of that spigot? That hasn't been defined very well, I think. At least I haven't heard the definition. Is that part of the agreement? Is that in the agreement as well?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I haven't seen that specific issue being raised, but that's certainly something I can follow up with them on.
Or maybe someone else knows the answer to that on select board.
I just, we've discussed it in the past that Meadowbrook would have that option. I think when Greg did refer to the fact that there would be a neighborhood in a contamination scenario that would be added. And I think that's what he's referring to is the Meadowbrook neighborhood. So I don't know what, and I think Greg would have to work this out with in the IMA, like what the trigger would be for that to happen, but that has been discussed all along.
So Meadowbrook would not be included when the district is first turned down. That's just a potential connection.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Sounds like we need, that's a follow-up item, I guess, is what it's.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else you want to say, Marion?
No, that's good.
And George, George, did you want to add anything?
No, no, no. I was just answering Marion's question. I'm just responding to what Marion had said.
Okay, Paul.
So my big concern has been that this district and the sewer connection not provide the basis for more 40Bs or other developments in the town. And the laws that give 40B developments the right to be exempt from local control such as zoning and whatnot always makes me worried about such a district like this. If we were, if we had a 40, a large 40B that was outside this district and we were less than 10% of our housing goal, are we sure that this district could say no?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Greg.
Yes, thank you. So, yes, we are going to work in safeguards into the the special legislation and the IMA to ensure that the opportunities to expand this district are very limited and are, and are subject to the specific approval of the Town of Sherburne. And we would do that in a number of ways. First of all, there is going to be a limited number of gallons of sewer flow that are going to be allowed to flow through this, this pipe. And that sewer flow is going to be based on the, the three categories of properties that I previously lined up. And so there, there is not going to be available capacity to serve any other large developments. In addition, because this is a, a system created by a special act of the legislature, then provisions of the general laws that provide rights of abutters to connect to public sewer are not going to apply to this. Because this is a, a separate and distinct entity and system. And so, you know, you know, while we can't say that a developer can't come in and, and put in a 40B project, that project is not going to be able to connect to this system unless they go through all of the various steps that we're going through now to increase the capacity of that district.
And sort of a related question is, this district as an independent body politic, how much control does the Town of Sherburne have, do you envision over that district? Since it's going to be within the, the limits of the town? It seems like we want to have some ability to have it connected to us in a governmental sense. In other words, the, the members who run the district, should they be elected by the voters? Should they be appointed by the Board of Select? What, what kind of governance are you envisioning?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So at the, I guess, the executive level, there's going to be a, a board of water commissioners and I would expect that Sherburne would have representation on that board. You know, whether that board, whether that, whether that representation is appointed by the select board or by the voters at an election is, is something that we, a detail we haven't gotten to yet, but certainly something that we can tailor to your preferences. In addition to that, I've made it very clear that Sherburne has to have a direct say in any decision to expand the boundaries or the flow within the district. And again, there's, there's a detail that we need to discuss, but I would assume that that approval would have to come by a town meeting vote. Preferably a two-thirds vote, but again, we can tailor that to however you see fit. It could be a select board decision. It could be a decision on a ballot in an election. But it most likely, and it seems to make the most sense, that that would be a town meeting decision. Otherwise, you know, the, the day-to-day management and things like, you know, billing and service and repairs, that's all going to be the responsibility of the district. And it's my understanding that you really don't want to be involved at that level once, once it's in. So we're going to reserve the, the big picture policy items to make sure that Sherburne has a say in it. But we're, we're not going to look to have you be involved in the, the day-to-day operations of the delivery of water and sewer.
Did that answer your question, Paul?
Yeah, at least at this point. I mean, if it's a five-person board and we have one representative on it, or it's a three-person board and we have two representatives on it, that's an important detail at some point to figure out what we want, but at this preliminary stage, I can wait.
Did you have any other follow-up questions you wanted to ask?
No, thank you.
Okay, George?
Oh yeah, just to follow up on one thing Paul said, I just want to remind everyone that one of the reasons that we, I, I think a lot of people are in support of this project and the size of the project is, it does put us over the 10%. So we can say no to 40Bs. I know Paul said when more 40Bs come along, well, I think that's part of the point of doing this is that other 40Bs won't come along. Other people are gonna have to follow Sherburne guidelines because we're gonna be over the 10%. So I just wanted to respond to that.
That's a good point. Marion, back to you.
Just a quick follow-up to Paul's question. This Water District Board, who will fund, how, how will the board's work be funded? Who, who pays for it, basically?
Go ahead.
Built into the charges on the developments?
Um, yes, thank you through you. The, you know, the, the users of the system are going to pay for the operation and maintenance of the system. So I, I don't know what this, you know, Pulte is going to pay, you know, a substantial connection fee in order to get the, the system built in the first place. I don't know if the other users will be assessed some sort of betterment, but once they're connected, they will pay a user fee. They will likely pay some, you know, premium above what Framingham residents pay because there is some additional cost there. But you know, it's expected sort of much like an enterprise fund that this will be entirely a self-sustaining enterprise funded by the users.
Are there any other questions from the select board? Okay, I'd like to solicit questions from, from the residents and Matt Vitale's had his stand-up for quite some time. So Matt?
First and foremost, I'd say, you know, anytime we talk about change and you go into the meeting and then you have less anxiety as the meeting unfolds, it feels like a really good sign, but not a common feeling. And so I really think the select are seeing a lot of really thoughtful questions that were really a lot of the things I was worried about. So knowing that you're not worried alone and also that, you know, Greg and his team have a good plan for that is reassuring. I think the thing I would just reinforce is I think, you know, kind of the thing that I remain worried about goes back to Paul's point, which is that I think the governance is really important. I am eager to enter safe harbor and I think I'll be really promising, but also recognizing our housing stock could change over time and that my recollection is this gets a safe, over safe harbor, but not way, way over. The other piece I was hoping to understand is, you know, this process has been unfolding with a lot of hard work from a lot of parties. Is there any risk that somebody could get an application in prior to the implementation of this project such that large parcels in that water district could be with a 40B application prior to the completion that gets us into safe harbor? Like what kind of timeline do we have there? And is there any way to mitigate the risk? And that's it for me. Thanks so much, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. I have an, I have an answer to his question. We are in safe harbor right now, Matt. When ZBA approved the Coolidge Crossing project, it was, put us in a year of safe harbor. So, so that's, that's an answer to that one.
Awesome. Thanks, George.
Yep. And I think that probably gets us to 10%, but if it doesn't, as long as we're showing progress towards our goal, if we're not quite at 10%, then we're still under our development plan that was put together. Marion's the guru on this, but anyway, that's, that's.
I think John Higley had projected that the size of this project maybe would put us over the 10% even through 2030. So that was, that was one projection I saw from his, from him, from him.
My recollection also.
Oh, Gino reviewed this with us at planning board. Chris might want to talk to this, but he did review that we are with Coolidge Crossing, we're at 10.1% based on the 2010 census. The 2020 census gives us a new base, which drops us down just below 10%. But with the additional units coming in from the fields and 59 North Main and Whitney Farm, we, we. we, we are again above ten percent and we have a pretty good chance, especially with the Affordable Housing Bylaw. Thank you, Planning Board. Uh, we can stay above ten percent through twenty thirty. But we have to stay vigilant because we can't add more than, uh, Gino estimated about ninety-some units between now and twenty thirty, units of housing total that is non-affordable housing. But right, right now, we're, we're in pretty good shape, so.
I don't see any other residents. So I have a question, I think I, I'll pose to the select board. The one thing that sort of comes out to me in this is that rather than waiting until the negotiations are a lot further along and then evaluating the choices, do we want to determine some way in which we could have input into the ongoing negotiations and, um, you know, any way that we would want to put some of the concerns that were expressed tonight or, or maybe some guidelines for the negotiations? And Greg, I'll ask for your opinion in a minute also on this, please. But, uh, how, how does the select board feel about us having? I'm not sure what, what the vehicle would be if we would have a executive session, uh, because of negotiations that we would brainstorm on, maybe some. If it's not requirements, it could be preferences for the negotiated terms that we would have some input upfront so that we didn't then, all of a sudden, when the agreements are further along, we have to either contest things or challenge things. Maybe there's a way we could influence them in advance. Does any of that make sense?
They kicked me out again. Someone keeps letting me in.
Where are you? I can't find you.
I know.
I know, I didn't.
You're getting excited. I think the agenda item's over.
No, no, there you go. Sorry about that. So, so that's my question to the select board at first, and then, then I'll ask, um, Attorney Carbo to, to weigh in on that. Did Paul, you, do you have any thoughts on this about us providing input upfront?
Yeah, so I think it's a good idea. I mean, this is the first discussion we've had, I think, in a really long time with this level of detail. And there were a lot of things that I learned today that I didn't know before tonight's meeting. And that really should be the case. I mean, we should be learning major things like this. So I think better communications is a good idea. More meetings, more memos, more more status reports as to where we're at. Things like that would be good.
Well, I'm thinking of maybe something a little bit more formal too. George, you're muted, but you, do you have any thoughts on how we can maybe if, if, if you feel it's appropriate, if we should find a way to get some of our input into the negotiations upfront rather than after the fact?
Yeah, no, I think that's true. I've actually been trying to, um, stay involved when I can, but I hadn't really talked to Greg. I know I did have a call recently with Mark Mastrioni from, just to touch base with where they were at. So more informally, but I think we should have something more formal where at least one or two, maybe I or Marion is involved with, um, with the process as it goes along rather than getting, getting informed after the fact. I agree with that, Paul.
Yeah, I'd like to see, not only get involved, but also allow the entire select board to then maybe weigh-ins probably too strong a word, but provide input is, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So I'm very much aware of the fact that Cleveland Farms, we had to come and rescue that project. And here, this project could be set up very nicely and we could have, you know, a nice board to start off with. But there could be internal disagreements, that there could be all kinds of problems. And I don't want it suddenly dumped on the taxpayers that we have to come in and fix something ten years from now or twenty years from now that, that we didn't really know about. We get caught blindsided. So it makes sense for us to have a, a fairly substantial role in the governance going forward. Cause it's within the town of Sherburne. In that we have input now. So what I gathered from, from Greg's description, we, there hasn't really been a discussion about the governance part of it, as to the details. And yet I'm concerned, given what, what happened at Leland Farms, that there be all these early warning devices and tripwires and so on. So we know if there's a problem that's brewing, that we know about it well in advance of it blowing up on the taxpayers.
Yeah, I'm actually sort of ahead of that phase too. It's just like in negotiations right now that we could just have some input. And I'm thinking instead of just getting briefings, you know, would it be useful to, for us, for example, and I'm just throwing ideas out there, to, to have a meeting, have Pulte come present to us of where they are. I don't know whether that makes sense. Maybe, um, Greg, you've sort of heard what I've said and you can feel free to connect anything, correct anything I've misstated or provide your candid input. I'd appreciate it.
Oh, sure. Thank you, uh, through you missed that note. Uh, certainly not to correct anything anyone has said. Um, you know, I think it's a great idea. Up until this point, um, you know, I've kind of taken a step back to let Pulte do its negotiations with Framingham and Natick because it didn't make a lot of sense to expend a, a lot of Sherburne's resources until we, we had more solid agreements with these other communities. And, and I think we are well on our way to that and that this is an appropriate time for now us as a community to start talking about what we want to see in that, in that agreement, you know, to start looking at, at more of the details, particularly the governance issue, um, you know, particularly the, the, the boundaries map and how things can and cannot be added. Um, what, what I would suggest that at the outset is that, you know, maybe we have a, a small informal team that, that can get together to start fleshing out some of those issues and say, okay, these are the issues that we're concerned about. Here's option one, two, and three for issue number one. Here's option one, two, and three for issue number two. And then that group can bring these options back to the board for discussion and, and vote. I, I think that would be more manageable than having the entire board have to have meetings every time. I think that there's probably some progress that a small group could make, you know, where if it had one or two of you in the group, as we talked about things, you could say, well, you know, I know that that will never fly with my board, or I know that this is something that's very important to my board. So then we can bring it back to the whole board, having had an informed discussion. And so I'm, I'm more than happy to, you know, lead those discussions and have as many of those meetings, whether they're in person or on Zoom. As you guys want, you know, like I said, I think it should have at least one member of your board, if not two. Probably the town administrator and, um, you know, I don't know if you'd want to have someone, you know, from your Department of Public Works or your, your water sewer department be involved. And, and I think we should have our group meetings separate and apart from Pulte and from the other two communities. And, you know, certainly at some point, everyone might need to, to get in a room and sit down, but you know, I think we want to make sure, you know, there's only so far I can advance the ball without having your input on the policy discussions. And so, I think we need to, to pin those down, um, so that we can move on to the next step.
Can I?
Go ahead, Paul. Go ahead, and then Marion's next. Go ahead, Paul.
I, I, I don't think that Pulte's interests are the same as our interests. In other words, they're, they're looking to essentially in the capitalistic system to make as much money as possible. And I think the town's interest is more in terms of the, the quality of life for the residents who are going to be living there and the how it affects and integrates with the rest of the community. So there, there really are two different perspectives. So I, 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 I don't think Pulte making a deal that works for Pulte is comprehensive enough. So I, I agree with what Greg said, that this is a good time. But I also say that I'm good with papers and seeing things and writing, going to meetings and people talking about vague concepts and they're what we're looking for doesn't work for me. I'd like to see actually what it is that's being proposed. So if Pulte has reached some understanding with, let's say, Natick, I'd like to see it. The hard copy, not just a, a, a general description. There was a reference there that there was going to be a limitation on the number of gallons. Well, I don't know how many gallons. And I can figure out based on, you know, the average flow from single-family homes and, and other dwelling units and so on, what we're, what that capacity translates to. So I can do some of my own homework if I have the raw materials. So I wonder if we can include in this, not, not just, uh, they're having meetings, but actually getting copies of things as they're happening. So that we can comment on it.
Yeah, that, that makes.
You, Mr. Chair. You know, let me, um, first I'll go back through, through my files and see what it is that I can give you that we have already. I mean, I have specific numbers and, um, you know, I assumed that you had those as well. Um, but I, I will make sure that I get those to you. Um, and then, and yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's important that, you know, that this, that this working group produce results that you can see. And like I said, you know, we'll, we'll have options for you and those options will be on a piece of paper or a computer screen and you can say, I prefer option one to option two, or maybe there's an option one and a half that you prefer, you know. So, yeah, I think that, you know, I want to do everything I can to keep all of you, um, you know, in the loop and able to make an informed decision. You know, I certainly understand that, that your interests are, are different than, than Pulte's. But the reason that I, I let them carry the ball in negotiations was because if either Framingham or Natick was going to say no, there was no sense in using your resources to, to think about these next steps. But I do think we are close enough now that, that it, it's appropriate to start going down that road.
Marion?
Right, yeah. My comment was very much like Paul's really. If we're going to have a working group, we want to see documents that we can work on. I mean, specific facts. But, uh, also a, a question in my mind all through this discussion has been, where exactly is, uh, Baystone in this? And what, what are the talks going on between Baystone and Pulte? I mean, I would hate to get to a late stage here and find that the communication between those two developers has been inadequate. Or that, uh, they don't actually agree on all the terms of, of the water use. And then another, uh, thing is we can get into this in the working group, but in terms of governance, exactly when is the handoff exact to this, uh, Water District Commission or whatever we're going to call it? I'd like to just get a feeling for the mechanics of how that's going to work as the prac, as the project goes forward. But I know you can't answer all that now. But that's something we'll be watching for. Thank you for your expla, explanation. Oh, Greg, it was very good.
So, so I'm a business person, not, not a lawyer, uh, but I respect that lawyers like documents because they spent law school studying them. So my my bias is a little bit that I want to maybe have input before they're in the document. In other words, if, if they're discussions, you can influence the discussion, then you don't have to contest something later that's already in the document that people have debated. So with that in mind, if Marion and George would consider it, I would like to think of the two of you as being on the, a sub-team that's developed to sort of, uh, as your time permits, work hand-in-hand with, uh, some of these discussions. Not that you can attend all of them, but it would give us what I'm describing as sort of a more, uh, real-time input. And then once some documents are available, then you know, we can review the documents also. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? Marion, did you want to add something?
No, I'm, I'm willing to do it.
You're okay with that, George?
Yes, I am.
Are there any other, um, select board comments? Does that seem like a good plan to everyone? We'll get periodic reviews either, uh, from Greg coming back or from Marion and George attending the individual meetings and, and then, um, we can intervene or discuss as necessary.
You have whacked up, Jeff, from a citizen.
I know, I was going to get to that in a minute.
Just wanted to make sure you know.
I know, I know. It's hard because I don't, I, I co-pilot for Eric and I, I lost him and I, I also don't have a co-pilot. So, um, does anything I said seem un, unreasonable or, or, uh, something you would like to add on to, Greg, at all?
Uh, no, I think that's a great idea. So I will, um, I'll work through the town administrator's office, um, to get through to, to George and Marion and, and set up an initial meeting. And, you know, we can, we could sort of decide, you know, how, when we want to meet and, and how we want to report back to the board, um, to make sure that, that we keep this ball rolling. And I've taken some notes and, you know, I, I sort of, I understand what your concerns are. And, you know, these, these are certainly, you know, issues that can be resolved. We just haven't gotten to them yet.
Right. No, that makes total sense. And your input was invaluable tonight. So we appreciate it. So, um, Ken, I apologize. I don't know if I need to unmute you. Um, I wanted to get the select board input. Can you identify yourself and then, uh, tell us what you'd like to say? Can you hear me? I think you need to unmute yourself. Can you try unmuting again? I, I'm not able to unmute your microphone. Almost looks like. Are you able to unmute, Ken? I've clicked unmute twice, but you have to do it yourself. Do, do you see a, a, a blue box that you could click on to unmute? No? We may have to just go on. I'm not able to unmute you and I don't think we, we can't hear you unfortunately. What I, what I would suggest is maybe if you have a question after the meeting, um, you could reach out to the town administrator uh, with that question to make sure it gets incorporated in what we do. I apologize, but I, there's some technical glitch here and I can't, you can't hear your input.
I have the feeling his hand may be up by accident.
Oh, is that what you think? It could be that.
I don't know.
I don't know. Anyway, I think we're good. Uh, Greg, great job and thanks for your time and we very much appreciate your support. Anyone else have anything else to add? We'll let Mr. Johnson out of purgatory. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thanks, everyone. It was good to see you and I'll be in touch.
Great. Good night. Now, we're, I let Eric in, but I got to find out where, where are you, Eric?
Right there.
You're up, dude.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Discovered one huge problem. When you go away, there's no co-pilot.
Seven forty-seven. So what are we on? Agenda item number nine? Time to do the planning.
We have just finished, we have just finished, um, updating us on item two. So we're up to item three, FEMA assistance with Zach Ward.
Okay, very good. And I did text Zach. I think he actually got back to a station who's driving a few minutes ago. Uh, Zach, are you here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I'm here before you tonight to request that you vote to accept, this Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award, um, in the total amount of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. What this is going to be used for is to replace our Jaws of Life unit on Engine Four. And then also, uh, we're going to add a second, um, set of Jaws of Life to Engine Six. So if Engine Four is out of town, um, whether it's mutual aid or it's out of service, or if it's out of calling town, where we're going to have two sets of jaws, of the Jaws of Life in town now, which is, which is really good. This was actually going to be a capital request this year, uh, but thankfully, um, and sort of in the final minutes, we were awarded this grant. As you may recall, um, we were awarded the same grant last year for air packs. Um, so it's the same grant program. The town has to come up with a five percent match, which would, which would come out to two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Um, I would propose that we use the, uh, the surplus equipment fund for that. And, um, that's pretty much it, sir.
Oh, very good. Yeah, very good.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations. Accept the grant and apply it for the purposes for which it was granted.
All right, move by Paul.
Yeah, I second Paul always when there's money on the table, he jumps out of his chair. I, I second the motion.
Okay, um, motion is seconded. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
I'm Marion.
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
All right. Thank you very much, Zach, and good job. Thank you very much. Are you staying on for the COVID nineteen update or is that, is Daryl here? Who's going to do?
I believe the Board of Health is taking that.
Yeah, I think Matt Vitale is still here and Daryl's here. Daryl, are you available to speak?
Yes, but I think I'll let Matt lead off and if there's still any appetite for more information, I'll bring up a few sticky points.
I don't see Matt, so let me find him.
He's there.
There you are. You wanna, I I just actually reviewed your graphics that you just sent out about an hour ago.
Sure.
Chart, yeah, not a good story. So would you, will you please update us? If people don't know, Dr. Vitale is a member of the Board of Health.
Yep. So Matt Vitale, Mill Street. The, so just for folks who kind of aren't on the distribution list, every week we look at the case data that's released publicly by the state. We started that process in conjunction with the district and so have a kind of our own composite measure since the original use of it was in making reopen decisions last year. So that's sort of the basis for the data stream. And the state data has thankfully gotten a lot more granular since. I think that one of the pieces that stood out over the last couple of weeks and looks to be continuing is that in this phase of the pandemic, we're seeing a pattern of local transmission that is different in its position relative to the state. Then we saw sort of an earlier one. So what we saw for the bulk of the pandemic to date was that Dover and Sherburne tended to run significantly below the state numbers, which were driven by very heavily impacted communities for our own communities while impacted were relatively spared. And we tended to run pretty close to the other Metro West communities abutting us. What we've seen over the last five or six weeks, you know, is kind of since the beginning of August, has been a trend where both Dover and Sherburne have been running slightly higher than the state and noticeably higher than the kind of other suburban communities around us. I don't think we have, unfortunately, we sort of don't get granular data in part because it sounds as small as ours, being able to say, you know, there's a person within this age range who did this on this date and was unvaccinated gets you really specific to a specific person, which runs into constraints about patient privacy. What we do know is that it includes a mix of vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. In general, the data about vaccine uptake in both Dover and Sherburne is quite robust. The key limitation for that data is that it's number of individuals as captured in the state cracking a vaccine, which is relatively reliable. But the denominator is an actuarial calculation based on the two thousand ten census and an adjustment model. And so we know that there's inaccuracies in it. The inaccuracies should be consistent with ourselves over time and consistent in the methodology applied. So using that data, our local vaccine uptake and those who are eligible is above ninety-five percent. I suspect that that's like the overestimate of local vaccine uptake, but probably in the right neighborhood. I think that I think it's unlikely that the state will update with twenty twenty census data just because it makes the methodology really different. It makes it hard to compare over time. So I think that what we know is we're a community that has well above average vaccine uptake across all age groups, with the youngest people being the least likely to be vaccinated, but still being more likely than the Massachusetts average, which is in itself higher than the US average. But we're still seeing that uptick. So you know, I think that was really the context we're looking at. On the school side, there've been lots of conversations around that in terms of how to manage school mitigating those risks. I think, you know, we're almost done with our second week. I won't change myself, but could be better, could be worse, and I'll I'll sort of take that in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. But I think there's a mental model that a lot of folks in our communities have. It's based on that earlier experience of pre-low local prevalence relative to the state. I think it's important to recognize. At least at the moment, we're not seeing that. Kind of wearing my other hat in my work life, I'm a hospitalist at the Brigham, and one of my responsibilities is, you know, kind of working on our COVID team and taking care of COVID patients. There's great data visualizations in the New York Times and what we're seeing locally, excuse me, at the state level, is that if you look at the per capita case rate, Massachusetts is both below the US average and much below the states with much lower vaccination rates. But there's also a particular benefit for hospitalizations and deaths. So that while we have a higher case rate than we've had at other points, our hospitalization rate remains pretty low relative to that and much, much lower than other areas that are that are kind of more challenged. So I think that we're still seeing benefits of vaccination. But we're seeing breakthrough cases. The morbidity and mortality of that is lower than it would have been without vaccination, but on the scale that we have is still substantial. There are early indications that we're sort of in a plateau and maybe in an early down trending phase. I think we'll find out about what our collective level of caution versus risk with Labor Day was in the next couple of weeks will tell us a lot. But at least the current data is somewhat encouraging locally.
Very good. And I do want to add that, what is it? The Board of Health in the last few weeks has required masks in the public buildings and what it got recommended that public meetings continue on a remote basis. I didn't want to add that for the general public.
Yeah.
Also, I'm sorry, Matt, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I think I think we recommended it, but we also for our own experience as a Board of Health, I think we found that community engagement is like fivefold higher when people don't have to be in the same room as us. So that has been positive and and something very good for our board. And we found that sharing the technical information is helpful, but also recognize that other boards may have other constraints. So while, you know, we'd recommend it, we also think each board kind of knows its own business best in terms of figuring out how to best be both safe and accessible to the public.
Yep.
No.
And the Board of Health has, this is Daryl, the Board of Health has received some comments of people who are uncomfortable given the circumstances of COVID and especially with the Delta variant of attending meetings in person. So there there's some laments about not being able to participate in meetings that they would like to if they're in person. So just something to keep in mind. It's not it's not back to normal in person. It's in person with some risk associated with it. That's different.
I'm saying, yeah, Paul.
Right. With regard to this uptick, do you have a sense as to is it a particular age group? In other words, like, is the Dover Sherburne High School or any of the educational facilities kind of leading the uptick or is it senior citizens that are being affected?
Yeah. So I will give a general sense. I do not think school is a principal or primary driver. I think we certainly have school age children who are affected. But it doesn't look like that is related to school specific risks or strategies. I think that in general, what we have tended to see and, you know, again, it's a little bit hard because we don't, as a Board of Health and an elected official, we don't get direct access to the primary patient data, which I think is completely appropriate, but it makes it a little bit harder to do it in this part of my life than in my work life in terms of figuring out just what's going on. I think that one of the things we've seen is that household spread is a common piece. So we have seen multiple households in the, you know, in the last month where one person comes in and then in fairly short order, we see that transmitting within the household. So I think that we will kind of tend to be in fits and starts because if the house that got COVID was in Dover, you might quickly have three or four Dover cases in a week that is still a sort of single instance of spread and thanks to quarantine, is not having secondary spread outside of the household. One of the things we know about Delta right now is that the the kind of rate of infectivity compared to the Alpha variant is about twice as infective. So I think that, again, wearing kind of my my work hat, lots of people say, well, I did this all last year and I stayed safe. I thought I was doing enough. And it's it's really that the rules have changed with Delta and that strategies that kept people safe may not have been quite enough. I don't know how much that's driving it versus there's some data that suggests that after a prolonged period of time, you know, on the order of seven or eight months, a lot of this is coming out of Israel right now. There's a modest decrease in vaccine efficacy. It's still quite good and we would have been over the moon when we were designing, you know, kind of at the front end of it to say, boy, it got down to this number. We would have been enthusiastic to be at that number. That doesn't appear to be a principal driver of what we're seeing here, although we certainly have breakthrough. You know, I think that we don't know for sure. My guess is household spread is the principal piece and school does not appear to be a primary agent right now.
Interesting. Any other questions on the board? How about the general public? Is there any, someone, Mary Nutt, sorry, Marion, you raised your hand. Thank you for doing that.
No, I just I just have a, not a question, but a comment. Everything Matt says is right. People tend to blame it on the Delta variant on on school or on particular age groups. But in fact, the population as a whole, even in Massachusetts, even here at home in Dover Sherburne, has definitely let down its guard compared to a year ago. So that's another component that we have to really keep an eye on.
Yeah, I I think, you know, stats got out, ninety percent vaccinated, so on and so forth. And you're right, people did let down the guard. Now, who's sharing this? Is this you, Jeff?
Oh, no, my bad.
Okay.
Okay.
The other thing I would just say is if folks want to be added to the data push, there's a wide array of people who sort of get the dashboard weekly. So feel free to just reach out. I'm happy to add anybody who's interested in receiving it.
Okay, reach out to the Board of Health or reach out to anyone of you, you or Daryl individually, I'm assuming.
They're welcome to reach out to me directly to the Board of Health if they can track down my email.
Okay, okay, sounds good. All right. And thank you very much for the update, both of you. No further questions. I'll move on to agenda item number five. Number five, acceptance of OPEB Declaration of Trust, Trust, I'm sorry, Heidi Doyle.
Thank you. Good evening. So this is mainly an administrative item. We had the town had voted last August to re-accept the Mass General Law that confirms our OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefit section. There was a presentation on it in the prior select board meeting. This is to approve the Declaration of Trust, which kind of outlines the rules and regulations. And then I've separated out the investment policy, which sometimes this was going to be an appendix within this. I'd like to have them two separate votes because if we, investment policy wants to change, I don't want to have to change the whole Declaration of Trust each time. So it's been sent to you for your approval and I'm asking if I could get a vote to accept both the OPEB Declaration of Trust and the accompanying financial investment policy upon which then it will be submitted to the town clerk on for filing for ninety days. And then it would be in effect.
All right, any questions on the board? Any motions on the board?
No, I would move that we do as Heidi recommended and accept the acceptance of the OPEB Declaration of Trust and the other terms and conditions that she described.
Yeah, as she requested, though, I probably should do, she requested two votes. So I might do want to make the initial motion, just simply the Declaration of Trust and we'll go. I think I think that's right, Heidi. Is that correct? You wanted two separate votes here?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I move that we accept the OPEB Declaration of Trust.
Second, and it's like my fault. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, any other motions?
Move that we, go ahead, Paul.
You can go ahead if you want.
Go ahead, Paul.
I move that we approve and accept the investments policy.
Okay, move by Paul, second by you. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am also high. Thank you very much and thank you very much, Heidi.
Thank you.
Yeah, Heidi's to be commended for all the work she's put into this. This was a big undertake. She had to work with consultants. She had to work with all kinds of people to get this to where it is today. So thank you, Heidi.
Yeah, I never mentioned it before, but I was impressed with last week's presentation as well. Very good.
It's very good.
Heidi's still on the floor, though. Agenda number six, consideration of a bond anticipation note.
Yes, so the next item is, I would like to get the approval by the select board to move forward with a bond anticipation note for the capital items from ATM twenty and ATM twenty-one. And I'm just gonna read them just because you have the list, but maybe the audience doesn't know what they were. So I'm asking for one million seven hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred and six dollars, which includes the ATM twenty items, which were the fire department portable radios, money for the town buildings, a DPW excavator, road management, stormwater, Pine Hill Engineering Road Study, and there was a Pine Hill School HVAC item. And then the ATM twenty-one items included police vehicles, fire hose, there was DPW equipment, there was a DPW one-ton pickup truck, town buildings and DPW roads. So the total amount of the items would have been two point three million roughly, and I'm asking for the one point seven to be on what amount we would actually be using within the next year. So I'm gonna ask for that vote first and then we'll separate out the other borrowing anticipation note I have.
So has it been out to bid and do you have a bank or is this just preliminary authorizing it to go out?
Authorizing to go out to bid.
Okay, so move then to authorize the treasurer.
And and you need to, you authorize on motion one.
I can read it, Eric. I have it here.
Okay.
I move for treasurer to proceed with bond anticipation notes for capital items from annual town meeting twenty twenty-one in the amount of one million seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and one million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and six dollars and to reissue the library building project bond anticipation note for one million six hundred thousand dollars.
I think, correction, I think we're separating the two. We're gonna vote on the library one separate, I think. Is that correct, Heidi?
I I think that would be the easier way to go.
Okay, so strike the last part of mine then. Ended at one million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand nine oh six.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I would second George's motion.
Okay, very good. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
I'm Marion.
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am also I as well. All right, is there any discussion about the one point six million?
Yeah, I would like to get Heidi's input, but I I would, there's a lot of things going on in the library right now, which we'll discuss in executive session. So with Heidi's input and thoughts, I I would move that we defer on the library bond anticipation note at least two weeks for our next select board meeting so that we can assess where we are and there may be changes that could affect it. I don't know that there are or not. But I think that I don't think it will impact, you can correct everything I missed, say, I don't think it will affect her borrowing timing or anything. It'll allow us a little bit more time to do some more analysis. So Eric, I would recommend that we let Heidi.
What are your thoughts on that, Heidi? You okay with that?
I'm okay with putting it off till the next one on the twenty-third, but then that that's kind of my drop dead of when we'd have to get approval. So that's fine.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion amongst the board? Okay, so good. Well, thank you very much. Thank you much, Heidi. Definitely input there. Moving on, agenda item number seven, consideration of a draft request for proposal for temporary office space for council of the aging, Sue Koller.
Hi, how are you? I think Dave wants to say something before I go on.
Oh, sure, David, you are. Say something. You're muted, David, just so you know.
Okay, I double mute. I just wanted to mention that before you talk about this topic, the we have to hold an RFP process for the community center to look at long-term leasing of the community center. Also, if the Council on Aging or any other department is looking for space, that's another procurement process. So with I didn't want to run two procurement processes at the same time, one seeking space and one getting rid of space because people would look at it and say, well, you just answered your own problem. But so I'd like to get approval from the board on when the timing of when you would like to see each of these, if you support each of those processes, which I assume you do on the, at least on the community center. And then the other matter was with the looking for outside space from the Council on Aging, they're located in the basement or the yeah, the base first floor, I guess.
Ground level.
Thank you, ground level. And they were ready to move when we had the the space proposal of relocating offices. And so they've been on hold for a little while and I don't, I don't know where to direct them. So I just wanted to preface that. So you got the scope of what? I don't know where to direct them, so, uh, I just wanted to preface that, so you got the scope of what.
Okay, very good, I mean, I'd like to hear from Sue, but my, my first reaction is I think the, um, RFP defines space accounts of aging is a higher urgency, but I could be wrong. Um, but we'll discuss that maybe after, uh.
The timing, yes, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that, that's my sense. Uh, so did you want to present or say anything else?
Yes, so, um, I don't know, I have a seven slide presentation or I could just go for my notes, um. Whatever is good for you.
Um, I said, do the slides.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Uh, you want to, um.
You, you should be all right to hit the share screen buttons too, I think.
Great, thank you. What happened? Okay, um, so, um, here we are today, um, as, uh, David said, we're in the, uh, lower level of town hall. We have, um, four hundred and ten square feet, we have three people in our office. Um, and we serve, uh, sixty and over residents and their families and that number is eleven hundred and twenty-five as of last week. Which is about twenty-five percent of the population. Um, so we really struggle to find, um, space and adequate locations to conduct, uh, programs and meetings. But more importantly, private, um, meetings with people that talk about sensitive issues such as medical issues, housing issues, finances. Um, we also shifted during COVID to the virtual, uh, events and this summer we did get people together. Under the tent at Jameson Field that we shared with, um, Sherburne Rec, and as everything, uh, everybody else, we, um. Are now looking to hold indoor programs at a safe, in a safe capacity. And COVID has impacted all of us and, um, especially impacted a lot of older residents, leaving them isolated and vulnerable. And we have noticed physical and mental health services have definitely been noticeable and on the increase. And holding in-person events, um, allows us to re-establish some lost social connections and also helps us check in on people. Um, so we are extremely grateful that the select board did fund, um. Approve the funding for the community assessment, which I think will, uh, identify the needs of the community and allow us to strategize for the future. Um, the Gerontology Institute will be able to present the findings of what, of the assessment in fall of twenty-two. But in the meantime, we really have a need for expanded space to, for the people that we serve and also to help us. Um, increase our volunteer opportunities, right now, we really can't fit anybody in our office. Um, and the, um. So we ca, people come in and they can't find us or they're, um, looking for something to do and we really can't give them anything to do, to help us out. Um, and I don't know if you're aware, but, um, during, since two thousand nineteen, when COVID started, we've delivered three thousand meals. Uh, we've contacted residents seventy and over, we've conducted many virtual programs. Including lifetime learning, mixing it up Mondays and exercise programs. We fielded over a thousand phone calls, we provided free transportation all of last year and this year through a transportation grant that we were awarded. And provided over twenty-five hundred services dealing with referrals and check-ins and technology help and. Appointments and errands, et cetera. Um, so what we're asking for is a request for proposal for temporary space for the COA. Where we could meet some of our needs, um, we're looking for a space that's handicapped, accessible. Has a kitchen, access to tables and chairs, a meeting room. A place for drop-in and then private office space and storage space and a central location near town hall that's, um, easy to find and visit. So we're hoping that, um, you will consider the proposal that we go out and look for some space as we wait for the results of the community assessment. And then also finally, if we move out of town hall, that will free up a little bit more space for, um, other departments.
Very good, thank you, Sue. Any questions among the board? You know, here, any questions from the general public? Actually, Paul, I'll go ahead, sir.
I, I, I just want to reinforce some of the things that she said, if we do an RFP, that doesn't mean that we have to accept anything. It allows us to see what's available, and I believe that, um. There are some churches who are interested in, in, uh, submitting proposals. There was a long-term relationship that the town had with a, one of the churches in town. So that's kind of what I would expect to happen with this RFP that we'd hear from some of the churches about what they. Might be willing to provide and at what cost to the town. We can always say no, we don't have to do anything. But we do need to take care of this vital functioning. And take care of twenty-five percent of our population. So something needs to be done on a temporary basis, town hall is not working for them. The plans that David Williams had put together for changing offices and doing all of that. This board discussed and decided not to go forward with. That left the council on aging. High and dry, if you will, with their four hundred square feet, not enough to do what needs to be done. So I say let's.
I recognize Mary in a second, but I have a question, that twenty-five percent number, that's over what age? Twenty-five percent?
Sixteen.
Sixteen over, okay. So it's twenty-five percent of Sherburne and.
You're not quite there, Eric, don't worry.
It's sixty percent of this board too, I mean, but anyways, Mary Ann, your turn.
Right, uh, you know, I, I know I brought this up before Sue, uh, and just so you know, I totally support what you, your group does. Uh, I just, uh, would like to see the RFP be a bit more specific. That is, you, you reference a lot of activities that you do, including big, big meetings, classes, meals, trips. Uh, what you're really, if I can understand it from all of your various presentations. Your real dire, dire need is for office space to accommodate the number of workers you need. To do your job and also small conference, private confidential conference space. Those are the, the really big needs that I see, all the other things are, I mean. You know, the, the churches may come forward with a good idea for larger meeting spaces, which is good too, but. I suspect that one, one, uh, RFP, uh, respondent. May not be able to pro, provide all those things, I suspect they're gonna get those from different sources. So, I would, I. Break it down.
Yeah, I suspect that we would hold our biggest events, um. You know, once the library is open and we do them at town hall, again, we're limited because. Town hall, there are other people that use those spaces and really it's, um, we need something central. A central location, not just for a conference room, but also to do smaller programs, people can't even come and play cards or. Drop in and have a cup of coffee, and that's part of, um, serving this, that population is some of them are, you know, they're lonely. They need somebody to talk to, the other piece is that our outreach person is constantly filling out financial applications. We have the shine person common doing applications, so it would help if we had one location. That, you know, we could serve a great number of people and then for the larger events go elsewhere.
Yeah, so that's what needs to be better defined in your RFP and maybe you've already written it that way, but, uh. It, it just, I, I'm always looking for a clearer definition of what you're really asking for, so whatever you can do in that direction would be good.
Yep, and we'll, and I'll be working with, you know, if this is approved, of course, I'm not an expert in drawing up an RFP, but would work with David and. Whomever else he deems the experts in helping us define the space.
Now, oh, I see Jeff, you raised your hand too.
Yeah, I think the, actually the harder thing is of trying in this proposal, what is temporary? I think it, it's gonna be very hard to do that for a whole host of reasons. Um, one relates to what we do with the community center who leases up in next February, which I believe will probably, David can weigh in. Be extended for a year, um, so that affects temporary, but also. If you think about this from a church, church or any of this, uh, one that responds to your, um. Uh, uh, proposal, you know, they don't want to maybe give up a long-term tentative, we're gonna go in there for, I don't know what period of time constitutes temporary. So in fairness to all the bidders, it seems like we should commit to some time, whether it's, I don't know what period of time that would be. But how would you assure them that you're gonna be, they may have to, for example, repaint the space or who knows what. Do something to make a handicap bathroom more handicap accessible, I don't know, I'm just making these up, but. I think the hard part you may have to think about with this, uh, the board of the COA and with David Williams is what constitutes temporary.
I, I don't think you can do at least more than three years without town meeting approval, what, um, what I've seen done before is actually make, um. One, uh, renewable each year, so I, at the end of each year, they have to hold a price and the town can decide whether to renew it or not. It may give whatever notice to it, so they make it one, two or three years, so you're gonna do it, you're gonna just end it after one year, renew it once, renew it twice for a full three years. I think you do something like that.
So if I could just, uh.
Yeah.
Respond to something that, uh, Marion said, the council on aging has made use of, uh, church in Sherburne fairly successfully. And so I know that a lot can be done with one location. Successfully, and I would expect from. Knowing the churches in town, that that's likely to be where this is gonna head up, that. That they'll end up working in an arrangement with the church to be in a church basement and. Have access to a kitchen and bathrooms and a few offices, that will help the church, it will help the council on aging and it'll help the senior citizens. As I said before, we don't, by doing this RFP, we're not locking ourselves into anything. We're not committing, you know, to, to buy a building, we're not committing to, to relocate them in the, in Springfield. We're just looking to see what, what comes in. And if we can do fifty percent in, in, in one location, that's great. If we can do sixty, eighty, ninety percent in one location, that's great, it depends on what the responses are. So it's hard to prejudge. And say, you know, don't, don't ask for too much, I'd rather go the other way and say, ask for everything and see what you can get.
I, I, I agree with that, Paul, absolutely, ask for everything, but, uh, also I think you need to communicate via the. RFP that, uh, that, uh, partial fulfillment of your needs is okay too, that is, you will consider. More than one location, just so people, well, just so people won't be, uh, reluctant to come forward because they can't provide it all.
You actually have to, it's actually, it's against the law to actually make an RFP so narrow, only one person can apply, that's called sole sourcing. Anyways.
Oh no, I didn't mean that, I meant that, that, uh, only, uh, one size fits all, that is, all programs have to fit in one place. They don't have to all fit in one place, larger programs could be elsewhere.
Also note that the, the churches I'm familiar with here in town are very kind and caring people. And they care about our seniors, and many of these people are parishioners in these various churches, so I would expect. A very favorable outcome in very short order. This is a good thing.
And, um, I don't know if anyone disagrees, but I would like to at least direct the town administrator that this, this RFP is a higher priority than the other one. Just if it doesn't want to put them up contemporaneously, so, you know, if anyone objects to that, but that's just my feeling on it.
No, I agree.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this, and actually, do you need a vote from us or just a general consensus, I guess, well, um, do we need to take action on this?
Oh.
Okay, never good, update.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you very.
Thanks, Sue.
All right, moving on, agenda item number eight, consideration of voting to stay a single precinct for town elections. Jackie Morris, which is funny, for my day job, I was just kind of having this conversation about thresholds for separate precincts and so on, like that's pretty interesting. But go ahead, Jackie.
Hi, thank you very much, so I apologize, my video, I can't get it to, it's not working right now. So based on the twenty twenty federal census, uh, Sherburne qualifies to remain a single precinct town for the next ten years. Uh, the select board must vote to approve the sing, the precinct map, which was included in your packet. But just in case you don't have it in front of you, it's basically just all of Sherburne, there's nothing, um, there's no outliers on that. And, uh, so you need to approve the precinct map and for Sherburne to remain a one precinct town. Um, I do have two authorization forms that are required to be signed by the select board, so I don't know if you would like to authorize David to sign on your behalf. But I have two forms that, um, one of which I will also need to attest and send into the secretary state's office. So both these forms are due to the state.
Okay, so does he, um, the action's on us, is this authorization or we need to authorize David to sign and what else, is that it?
You need to vote to approve the precinct map, which is basically just all of Sherburne.
Yeah, okay.
Including your packet and for Sherburne to remain a one precinct town for elections. So we will just have one precinct like we always have in, you know, our precincts at town hall.
All right, any motions?
I was hoping we could gerrymander a little bit here, I didn't know.
I was, I was thinking. I was thinking that my, my property was cut out of the precinct, so, nobody else at town will be voting, but not me.
Well, I was actually thinking of that, if we ever hit the threshold, we had to do precinct, two precincts, why would we vote like? Yeah, that was farm stand, you know, I mean, there's no, I mean, public buildings in town, and maybe, I don't know.
No, I, I'll, I'll, can you decide, I would move that we, uh, support the, and vote to, uh, to stay a single precinct for town elections.
All right, so move by Jeff?
I second.
And just to clarify, Jeff, to the friendly amendment, that you basically, you're voting to accept the map, I think that's officially what they need. Okay.
I vote to accept the map.
Okay, all in favor, uh, Jeff?
Hi.
I'm Mary Ann.
Aye.
Paul?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Aye.
I am I, now do you need to step over to authorize David to sign whatever?
Yeah, yes, that, they do need, that I have two forms that need to be signed by the select board, so if, if you want to authorize David to sign them for you. That'd be great, or you'd all have to come in next week.
So much as I do enjoy doing that, okay, there you go. Move by Paul?
Second.
You have a second? Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am also I, I have one curiosity question, so is the threshold five thousand people, when you go above five, you can't maintain, so precincts are supposed to be four thousand each. But you'd have flexibility as long as not over five, is that correct?
Yeah, I think actually the population is around sixty-three hundred, some, it's, it's over six thousand, it's gonna be a while before we get there.
No, we've been within the same two hundred people since nineteen seventy-one, and that's not an exaggeration.
Yeah. It did go up by two hundred and eighty-two people from two thousand and ten.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much, Jackie, if there's no further ado, um, we'll move on to agenda item number nine. Consideration of joint appointment to the planning board, we have Frank Hook, where terms expire at the twenty twenty-two annual town election. And Robert Wolf to expire at the twenty twenty-two annual town election, all these appointments are made until next available election. All right, I guess, um, Chris, do you want to call your meeting to order, or man, amongst yourselves?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um. Our meeting's been posted, I can't see who's here, so do I have a quorum?
Uh, I would just call out your names, there's, there's a total of forty-four people here, so just call out your members and let's see if they respond, would be my suggestion, Chris.
Is, is Addie May here?
I'm here.
Yes.
Okay, is Will Dunham here?
I'm here too, Chris.
Okay, good, um, I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting this evening, I'm not gonna take a vote on it, but I would like to start with a few comments. As everybody knows, um, Seth Malloy has withdrawn his name. It makes it a little bit easier on us. I have spoken to Zach McBride and we had a wonderful conversation. I told him I'm a little uncomfortable supporting his application where he, where we have two great people that put their name in and he, we could vote for him, but he would not be able to serve yet. So I had spoken before to Rick Novak and he's looking for an associate member. And so I've put those two in touch with each other. So hopefully that'll help ZBA, Zach's an attorney and he has a background in some zoning law. So that takes care of that issue. So what I would like to do is I'd like to nominate Robert Wolf to fill the remainder of John Higley's term. And I'd like to nominate Frank Hook to serve the remainder of Marion Neutras term. And I have one other thing that really doesn't have to do with this appointment process. But I would like to request that at the select board's next meeting, if you could put on your agenda and I'll have Gino speak to Diane about it. But I'd like to also, if we elect Robert Wolf, I would like to appoint him to the advisory board position on the MWR TA as the Sherbin representative. Their first meeting of this, of this year is October 4th. And Senate President Karen Spilka will be a guest. So I, I want to make sure that Sherbin's represented. So that's what I have to say. And however Eric wants to handle the vote, that's fine. This board has already, is already in support of everything that I commented on.
Okay, so first, before we actually do any votes or whatever, and I'll probably ask the planning board to vote, vote first, then we'll kind of vote on their recommendation or whatever it is. Is there any discussion or any questions amongst the select board members for either of these candidates? Yeah, Paul?
Eric, I think we have to vote together as one group.
That's what I was trying to say.
All right, all right. So I would actually call all, so Chris, how many do you have?
We have three.
Okay, it was you, Will and Addie, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Five of us, three of them, that makes total eight, five to elect. You need five.
Okay, so it's okay with Chris, I'll, I'll basically call for the nominations, I'll call for the whatever and I'll go do the roundtable vote then.
That would be fine.
Um, okay, is there any questions among the select board for either members? Do any of the members want to say anything?
I think they're great candidates and thank them both for coming forward. Thank Chris for the work he's put in to this. I agree with what he said about the, the additional appointment next meeting. So I'm ready to vote.
All right, if there's no more further discussion, I'll ask for a nomination or ask for a motion, I should say. Actually, Chris, I think you made a motion, by the way.
Yes, he nominated both of them.
You know, I mean, both of them for the different states and you second Paul? Okay. So all in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Addie?
Hi.
Will?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I'm also I. Congratulations and thank you both for retiring, volunteering. My brain's clearly elsewhere. Thank you both. Okay, now we have, um, consideration.
To adjourn.
Okay.
Good night and thank you. Addie?
Hi.
Yep.
Yep, Will?
Hi.
All right, very good, very good.
All right, have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris.
Next one is consideration appointment of assistant town collector, Pam, assistant town collector Pam Dels. I see you turned your video on, we are. Yeah, go ahead, Pam.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to bring before you that Tish began working in the collector's office about a year and a half ago. She was brought in as a clerk, promoted to an administrative assistant. And she's worked tirelessly with me through the COVID pandemic, through the Vadar implementation. And has been instrumental in helping me streamline some of the processes in the collector's office. She's been a very valuable employee, so I'm pleased to bring before you to join me in appointing her as the assistant town collector.
Is my memory failing me? Did we do this last year? Do we have to do this every year or is this a one, one shot deal?
Just, just a one shot deal. I think you did it for me.
Okay.
Yes, and now, now you have to do it for Tish.
All right, any questions?
Can I make a nomination? Can I nominate Tish? And Tish, here's the dog that you wanted to see the other day.
Oh.
She said I wasn't allowed to get a new dog license unless I showed her the dog. So here he is.
I love it.
That's nice.
I think she's got a walk it for you then, it sounds like to me.
All right, so moved by George to nominate Tish. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, but I also have someone I want to acknowledge because I see Nancy has a virtual hand raised. So before I take the vote, I'll recognize Nancy.
You're muted, Anne.
Muted, yeah.
I just wanted you all to know and stand with me to commend Pam and Tish, who have taken over the office with under the worst circumstances between COVID and the things that they've had to deal with. And they've had to do it basically, the two of them, because of the restrictions with having fewer people in the office and and so not being able to use clerks as much as they would ordinarily. And having to put in a new collection system and go to quarterly billings and they didn't miss a beat. So I think that we should thank them for keeping a smooth running operation there and certainly support fully making Tish officially the assistant, though she's been working as such for some time. So that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Absolutely. And you would know. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I'll go through and do the roll call vote. Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am also I as well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Tish.
Great, thanks everybody.
Undo your hand. Yeah, thank you. Okay, next up, consideration appointment of director of veteran services, veterans grave officer and veterans burial officer. Diana Huck for a term to expire April 1, 2022. Do you want to say anything? I'm just going to, if you want us to vote or do you want to say anything? Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Paul to nominate Diana. Do I have a second?
Second.
By George, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am also I. Thank you very much, I am for volunteering. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Diane.
Okay, we actually made some good time there. Agenda item number 10, routine business. I think a couple of people mentioned that they wanted me to talk, select board reports. Do we have any select board reports?
Yeah, I'd like to make a select.
Go ahead, you can go first, Mary.
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to report on the potential development of the Medfield State Hospital site. You may know that Medfield bought the site some time ago from the state with the understanding that the historic buildings would be preserved if they went ahead and developed it. And now they have put out an RFP for a multi-residential unit development on that site. And according to my Medfield sources, they were a bit disappointed that only two proposals came in, but they're very complete proposals. And the two proposals are very interesting. They were presented last month to the town in a public forum. And some of you may have been there, but I put together a little summary of the two proposals and what the, the decision that's facing Medfield right now. You may think, well, that's Medfield. What does it have to do with us? But actually it has a lot to do with us because depending on how that site is developed, it could have a big impact on traffic on Route 27 to begin with. It's also a recreational resource for Sherburne and for the region along the river there. And what happens on this, that site also will affect the Sherburne open space in an indirect way, in a viewscape way, that is from Sherburne Conservation Land. We look right over the, right over the river onto that space. So there are a lot of reasons to be interested in what's happening over there. So I went to the presentations, I went to one of them, I watched the video on the other, I talked to a few people in Medfield, including a select board member that I had a personal connection to. And I just wanted to show you what's the decision that they're facing and I'll be very, very brief. If I can share my screen, I will share.
You're good to go, I mean.
Okay, here we go. Can you see that? This is, this is the first of the two proposals. Let me move these heads over so I can. Yeah. Get rid of them. Okay, this is the first of the two proposals that, that you can see here. One is from Trinity Financial Group. Incidentally, they haven't even started to debate these two in a serious way. The Medfield State Hospital Development Committee, which is MSHTC, will meet again on September 15th next week. And again on the 27th to talk about these things in detail. But let me just give you their initial proposals and what the initial response from the town was.
Mary Ann, Mary, can I ask a quick question upfront? Sorry for interrupting you. You said that they were required by the state to preserve the historic buildings. Are there any buildings there that are not considered historic? Like, is there a subset or?
Yes, there are a few that are not historic.
Okay.
Some sheds and barns.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but the vast majority are in a historic designation.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, I just wanted that as a sort of background. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Trinity Financial came forward with a proposal that basically hits all the boxes on their RFP. Like preservation, open space, community use, et cetera, et cetera. And this is what they wanted to look like. They want to take all the historic buildings, keep the exteriors intact and renovate the interiors into multifamily housing apartments or condos. I'm not sure exactly what the proposal, what the exact mix would be. But the, the map of their proposal would look something like this. At the bottom, if you can see my cursor, this is Hospital Road. So Route 27 is over on the left here someplace. And the Charles River is running up kind of through the left-hand corner here and off separating Sherburne, something like this. So this, actually the Charles River kind of runs more like down like this. So much of this hospital site has a view of the Charles. Anyway, to be really quick, the Trinity proposal proposes 334 residential units, but put into these historic buildings with the exteriors intact, plus a few cottages down here in this area that they call the Arboretum. And the entrance would be from Hospital Road, Circle Drive, and the center would be reserved for Medfield Arts Programs and Art Centers. There would be a community kind of art center here. And these little orange cones show the view toward the Charles that they, that is really good for the site. So that's the first one. And they would pay Medfield about $3,750 and change to, to do this.
And just to correct that a little bit, it's, it's $2 million in cash and I think 1.75 and somehow renovating of the art center, I think was something like that.
Yeah, something like that. And the cash was divided, divided actually between payment to the town and payment to the art center. And the town officials said, but wait a minute, we wanted to go to the town and we'll decide what goes to the art center. But in any case, that's the basic proposal. Then Polte came forward with a proposal that couldn't be more different. Basically, they're not going to renovate anything. They're going to tear down all the buildings and start from scratch with a Polte type proposal that consists of large apartment blocks like this and some little, I would call them cookie cutter townhouses like that.
You can't add too much commentary to that, but yes.
But they came up forward with three options for the town. And incidentally, while Trinity was going to have to go out and raise money for this, Polte has really deep pockets and they're going to fund the whole thing. Okay. The first option is very small, actually. Here's again Hospital Road and the rivers over here. And they want to put 73 townhouses right along this area, quite far away from the river with a quite hefty price proposal to the town, paying Medfield some $7 million and change for that. Polte didn't seem very interested in this, to tell you the truth, because they presented it. Their option B is to develop the whole site with townhouses, now 152 townhouses and 450 apartments in these large buildings that all kind of look like the picture that you saw here, here, here and here. And one of their selling points is that these buildings would have great views of the Charles and of Sherburne, by the way. The total number of units would be over 600 and they're offering almost 30 million for that plan. The third is an expanded expansion of option B that includes all of the townhomes and all the apartments, but adds more apartments facing the river down here. Gives you 702 total and they're offering Medfield 44 million and change for that. So that's all pictures I was going to show, but the, the comments from the town were like very negative on this one. Pretty negative on this one because they're concerned about their obligation to preserve the historic site. This one, maybe. They certainly preferred the Trinity plan, but they love the money of the Polte plan.
Mary, a question on that, if they did this option A, would the rest of the land be retained by Medfield to do something else with?
Uh, no, they would buy the whole property and they say they would just leave it, just leave it. And in what state? I don't know. Would they raise all the buildings? I, I have no idea. They talked about community enjoyment, but they weren't specific.
I mean, if it was me, I would make it a $10.5 million plan and just give them that little triangle down there and have Liberty do the rest of the property. I know, I realize that's probably not feasible, but.
Well, maybe it is, Jeff, because one of the comments during that meeting and later from a select board member was what about a hybrid plan? Polte was asked, would you be willing to partner with another, another developer to do maybe option A plus, you know, another developer doing the rest, obviously they had Trinity in mind. And Polte said, yeah, well, maybe we would. So that's where, that's where it landed. And that's all I wanted to show you, but that gives you an overview.
Very nice summary. I, I, I made it to one of the presentations, but not the other one. And I actually didn't see Polte's, but I saw the other one. It's interesting. And you're right, there couldn't be any further apart. They're just like complete apples and oranges. Depends what direction they want to go. And I don't know what their legal obligation is to preserve those historic buildings. But Polte is kind of, you can tell that's not what they do. We build new homes.
Yeah, that's what Polte said. That's not what we do. We don't renovate. We don't restore. We, we build new stuff.
Yep, that's what they do.
So I guess I could make a comment here that I'm probably the closest to.
I was going to say, can you, can you comment on it? You're like in a butter almost.
Now that you have your own voting district, Paul, yeah, go ahead.
My own precinct, yeah. This is appalling. To have 800 houses there or dwelling units there. Just imagine the number of people and number of people and the number of cars. And where are those cars going to go? Well, if you go down Hospital Road, you can go right or you can go left. And if you go right, you're going right up past my farm and into Sherburne. And then you're going to hit the Sherburne downtown area. The last time we had an issue like this, a proposal of this magnitude, when I had discussions with the state about it, who had owned the property, they said, oh, we have a simple solution for Sherburne. We'll give you money to widen your streets so that you can go. Your streets so that you can go four lanes through your business district and put in traffic lights and. All these wonderful things that you can handle more traffic. But I don't think destroying the character of Sherburne is where we want to go with this. This is really way too much, uh, for the site. It's a. It's a beautiful site. The buildings are quite beautiful. It almost has the feel of a college campus. And for it to be packed with the kind of things that Polte is talking about. Is, uh, is not good, so I would recommend that we. Try to. Influence the result by maybe saying we don't like the Polte proposal as being too dense for the site.
I don't know if that'd help, you know, I mean, I think, uh, you can often. You, you risk basically, you know, another town comes in, tells another town what they shouldn't, shouldn't do, what they prefer. That could almost backfire, I don't know, I think we should monitor it, I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts, I definitely something that we. And thank you, Marion, again for, you know, paying attention to it, I was paying a little attention to it.
Three, go ahead, Paul.
This is one other issue that I was gonna bring up, sort of as a separate item, but it's related. That is that, uh, Natick has notified me that they want to remove the dam. That's in South Natick, and when you remove the dam from South Natick. That dam is what keeps the Charles River where it is, the height of it right now. In front of this property and keeps the wetland basin that's further upstream on the Charles River. If that dam is removed, because Natick doesn't want to spend the time and effort to maintain it. If that dam is removed, you're going to have a very different visual impact. Both for people who are buying homes on the site. And also for Sherburne, when we're going down twenty-seven, you're not gonna see. What you've been seeing so far.
Yeah, they gotta be cautious with that when they move it, I've actually, um, I knew of someone who was a private entity that wanted to remove a dam for liability. Got sued by all the butters because they lost their waterfront properties. It's, um, I know, it's interesting, a lot of devalued the properties, it'd be interesting how Natick does that, because that's a pretty steep dam, there must be some drop there anyway. Can't imagine that just going straight down that low elevation. I do want to recognize two people raising their hands, I'd like to recognize, uh, Sarah Tipton and Courtney Eck.
Yes, um, the Veterans Services ended up, our agent ended up so quickly, I didn't get to say. I think, um, Ms. Hook will do, Mrs. Hook will do a wonderful job, but I don't think we recognized, um, Doug Brody. Who spent many, many years going to many meetings and, um, being, putting up many flags. I think we need to, um, say yes and yay to him because he was a wonderful, uh, agent for us. Also, I just, I thought those historical buildings in Medfield are on the historical registry. So I'm not sure that they can be torn down, I just, I'm not sure, but that's what I've heard, so.
Okay, no, thank you for that, and yes, I'm a remiss for not recognizing Doug Brody, absolutely, um, absolutely tireless, um, excellent volunteer. Diane, you have big shoes to fill. Absolutely, okay, I'm, um, this is the ORICP, uh, Courtney. And Sarah, please put your hand down, just because it moves the order around, thank you.
Courtney Eck, forty-one Green Lane, I just wanted to comment on what Paul said about the dam removal. So this is, this has been a big ongoing thing, um, in Natick that, you know. We've had members of conservation and groundwater protection keeping an eye on it. Um, and, you know, the consensus is they've had lots of engineering studies done. They've looked at the flow of the river and, you know, I, I'm leaving a lot of information out here because this is very like. Back of my mind that I'm digging out right now. Um, the di- removal of the di- the dam isn't like a flood control device. And like the way it's holding back the water, the area that will be affected when they remove the dam. Will be just in South Natick, right around like the Bacon Library and stuff. Like that area that's kind of a pool, um, that is the only area where the water level will go down. Before you even get anywhere close to, um, Sherborne, there will be no noticeable, um, water level drop. Um, and, and there's a, there's a lot more information to that, all of the, um. The meetings and the presentations and the studies are available to watch online, you can find it like through the Natick. Um, Town Government. Um, and there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of positives as well to removing the dam. Um, one being that there's, um, there's fish that would normally be traveling upstream. Um, into Sherborne that, um. Can't, can't get there because of this dam, um. So they're, they're pretty excited that, you know, we could bring back some of the species that used to, used to traverse our waters. Um, with restoring natural flow.
No, I lived out west, I was huge, actually with the salmon and the stillhead population, the dams are killing the migratory populations, absolutely. Um, okay, thank you very much, Courtney, uh, Mary Ann.
Oh, yeah, I, I, for now, I think the thing to do about the Medfield State Hospital situation is to wait and watch. But I should say that, um, when Holliston was considering the Odessa expansion in Holliston. That would have severely affected traffic in Sherburne on Western Ave. Uh, several of us, including a couple members of Concom and myself. Uh, went to the Holliston Planning Board meetings and weighed in and brought up the issues in Sherburne because they were sort of. Odessa was sort of playing the two towns off of each other. Uh, and brought up the, uh, the water resource issues with the aquifer that the two sounds share. And, uh, I don't know, maybe it's delusions of grandeur, but we think that the Sherburne input had, uh, had played a big role in their denial of that project.
And you know what, maybe, um, keep in tune as these public meetings start coming up and discussions and maybe just, uh. Maybe notify David and Diane to notify us, so, um, you know, we gotta be careful, I'm the attend, but that's good to know, absolutely. Um, Rubble, you're next.
Hi, uh, I had a question for Marion about the hospital property, which is, I, I spend a fair amount of time over there. Uh, mountain biking or cross country skiing or whatever. And I remember quite some time ago, seeing that, um, they had a signboard outside. The building in the sort of central square with the top clock tower. Uh, that basically seemed to be saying this was going to be a, a community arts center. And are they like, is the town committed to that? And they're asking these developers to incorporate that as part of the product, project, or is that? Something that, do you know whether that's like up in the air or what the status of that is?
Uh, thanks for bringing that up, Rob, in fact, uh, that they, the town is absolutely committed to that. And both projects preserve that community arts center. Actually, you'll see kind of a, a circle in the middle of all of those, uh, developments. The Trinity Plan preserves it in a much more, uh, mindful way, I would say. I mean, they're making some nice space in the middle and there's a lot more added to it, but, uh, both projects are preserving.
And, uh, Jeff.
So, so a couple of points, one, Marion, I didn't remember the number, but I thought it was three forty-four, you know. Paul made a very good point about the, the biggest Polte thing of being, I can't remember the number now, seven hundred or whatever it was. But I thought the, the, the more, the, the first proposal from Liberty was like three hundred and forty-four, is that correct?
You know, uh, I got a little confused, I, I'm not absolutely sure because.
Yeah.
Uh, in, in one part of their plan, they said seventy-two townhomes. And I think they meant like three hundred and some more residents, but they said. Three hundred and fourteen more residences, so I think that might be a mistake, it's more like seventy-two.
Yeah, I didn't know the number for that one either, but, but those are big buildings, so. It's gonna have a fair number of people, those buildings, I bet you that each one of those buildings probably had seventy-five residents, some of them were big. They were dorms, you know, you know, the population of that Medfield State Hospital at its peak was close to twenty-eight hundred people. Wow, that's how many people were there as, now they're not, they were in much smaller, uh, uh, spaces as, you know. Patients in a hospital, but there were twenty-eight hundred people that, that lived there, including, including the staff. Another unknown metric, I don't know if you do this, but. Um, all those buildings, we see they were built in about three or four years in the late eighteen nineties. And not only that, they built eleven of those state hospitals, this isn't even the biggest one. So, um, they built a huge one in Worcester and the biggest one was the one in, uh, where is it? It's up near Peabody, I, what's the name of that one, I can't think of it right now, but. There was eleven state hospitals they built in like a very short period of time. And so to answer Paul's biggest question, we're gonna fund on the capital budget next year. A toll booth outside your property on Route twenty-seven, and then we will discourage traffic by, uh. Making economic choices for people to go another way. You'll have to cede some land to us, though.
I think Dan, this was a state hospital, by the way. Yeah, I know, if that goes in with, with whatever it is, eight hundred units or whatever else, I'll never get a seat at Basil Restaurant again, I can barely get a meal. I did only, I did only restaurants, Takara's, um, Noon Hill Grill, uh, Basil's, that's like my life. All right, looks like we're done with that, that was a, um, thorough select board report, thank you.
Thank you, Marion, that was really interesting, I have a short one, I can't, I can't compete with Marion, so, um. And George, I need your attention also, I, my, my, uh, George was, people know, George was. Chair of the Police Chief Search Committee, which we just signed the contract this past week, so we have a new police chief that will be starting in early November. And so my proposal for Eric and George's consideration of select board is, I think we should draft a formal letter. Of thank you to Wayne Sampson, our search consultant, and to Vicky Relis, although she's, you know, a volunteer in town. She did, um, a tremendous amount of organizational planning work that allowed that search committee to be successful, so I would like to. If we have, I'm not sure Diana or David, if we have a sort of a standard, um, thank you letter for service, but I would like to recommend that we do that.
Jeff, uh, as usual in the search committee, Vicky is a step ahead of you and has already drafted a letter to Wayne, so.
Well. Keep it secret because we'll just print it twice, sign it twice.
No, she hasn't sent it to him yet, she sent it to me as a proposal that we should do it.
Yeah, but I, I want to thank her too.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah. She's, she's, she's a hustler, I know she's good, but I, I think we, they. We put a lot of time into, but they really, really work, uh, just a terrific team to support us.
Yeah, absolutely, no, that we would not have gotten that done, it was actually a, um. A good result, it was a thorough process, there's like zero, zero delta questions when we finished that, that was, uh. Very well done, and really those two were the backbone of the entire thing. Um, that and the chair of the committee, yes, Jeff. Uh, Jeff, yeah, I, I, George, you had your hand raised and.
Yeah, yeah, I just, just kind of go off of that, one thing we need to start thinking about. Is we do have an open finance director position, I think we need to really start thinking about how we want, if. If we're gonna be making, I know some people have mentioned maybe looking at the Java script and everything before we go out and look for a full-time. Finance Director, I think it's something we need to start thinking about sooner rather than later, especially with budget season coming up. Um, I, I just, I, I know Deb's doing a great job as our intern. But we also need to make sure whether it's her or whoever we go out and hire, we need to start that process.
Yep, that's a very good point.
And, and my other thing I wanted to ask while I have the floor is. An update on what happened with the bond or the, the grant or the supposed earmark money. That we were supposed to have for the Pine Hill Access Road. That we talked about, that we were potentially gonna get some earmark money. Um, we've now built the Pine Hill Access Road, which is great, but are we getting any state money for it?
That's like the, the earmark.
Yeah.
We, we missed this year, we missed this year funding.
No, we, we, we were told before that the earmark, uh, nearmark wasn't going to work. But the, uh, request for, from the municipal transportation bond bill. That's, that was filed with the governor's office of, uh, a short time ago, just a few weeks or a month ago. Um, and that's, that has a very low chance of coming through as well, um, but those, um. You know, our representatives were pretty clear that the, the earmark wasn't going to, um. Be coming through and we've tried that for the last five or six years, uh, for those dollars.
It wasn't in one year or am I just making that up in my head?
We, no, we've definitely had it hit the earmarks, but we were told, I was told that. The town, there isn't enough gain for the entire state to be funding the one road, and that was. That was the selling point that they would have to use in the legislature.
So, so Eric, I think I, I, I may have mentioned, I talked to David Linsky, but. Sorry, about this in July because Heidi was trying to decide what to borrow to complete the construction work. And David told me first that the, and, and we need to validate all this, and I, I'm not sure I understood all of it, but. I thought the earmarks were also, they were not grants, they were just state loans. So it wasn't a grant of money, I thought it was just a, a, an advantaged, uh, maybe no, no interest or low interest state funding. And Paul, you may know this too, but, but I heard the same thing David. Williams told me from David Linsky that, that it was really more of a legislative issue and there wasn't something that we could have done, but we. I think George is right, we should just validate it for two reasons, one to find out if there's still something we could do on that front. But maybe if there's other earmarks, how we handle earmarks in the future also, so I think George makes a good point.
And one thing to think about is also, is there a way we could use any of the A R P A funds towards the money we spent there? Since we do have that money and rather than projects that we're just finding a reason to use it, using it for something that we've already spent to save taxpayers some money.
Yeah, not only that, but so, that's a good point too, but, uh, Steve really wants, um. They want to showcase what they did, so, so they want projects, they don't want you to, you know, like. You know, repatch something, that if you can show them something that's new and is beneficial and is highly visible. They like to showcase those things at the state level.
Yeah. I don't know, uh, I think maybe, uh, warrants, uh, further discussion, because I'm, ideally. Um, I would like to put these funds toward, uh, something that we're gonna spend anyway, you know, to buy something. That, you know, nice new shiny thing that we weren't gonna get anyway, kind of, you know, every year we struggle like, you know, get some free cash, make it nineteen ninety-nine per thousand. Whatever it is, I'd just be nice to, you know, offset that a little bit, anyways. Um, okay, so. I guess, uh, George, I just want to make sure, did you want any follow-up with that earmark question or are you?
No, I, I think, I just wanted, I think, I think if there's opportunities, I want to make sure somebody's actually looking at it. And, um. I just wanted to find out whatever happened with it because there was discussion at one point, and I think we should really. Consider ARPA funds if we can use them for that.
Okay, uh, Paul, you, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I, I, I first raised it to answer George's question, but. Really, the reason why I wanted to speak was to celebrate, uh, Doug Brody a little bit. I think as the longest-serving member of the current board, I had occasion to work with him for years. He's been, uh, uh, Veterans Agent, I believe, for at least seven years. And he has been just tremendous. He's been not only taking care of the traditional veterans duties. But he's expanded that to include a lot of other things. He's very active in Veterans Day, he's very active in, in the, uh, Memorial Day events, he's, he's. Really put his heart and soul into this, it's, there are several times during the years. When I, I looked at his stipend, I think it was like four hundred dollars or something ridiculous. And said to him that we need to increase that, he never wanted any money. This was, this was, uh, uh, done out of love and caring. You just can't find people like Doug Brody, willing to put in so much effort. With essentially no compensation at all, so my, my hat is off to him. Like profound respect, and he will be missed, and, um. On behalf of the community, I'd like to express, uh, uh, the deepest gratitude. the deepest gratitude and thanks.
Yep, I think, I think, I certainly agree. I think the entire board agrees as well.
Absolutely. And I would just modify slightly to include Sally because a lot of the things he did, she helped him accomplish.
Very much. All right, yeah, all right. Any other reports?
Just a word about the earmark. The the fact is we missed on the question, was it a loan or is it, is it cash payment? The way it was set up was a cash payment, was a grant, was not meant to be repaid. They, the part that's a loan is the way the state funds it, is that they borrow the money. The state borrows the money. Then we use it to build the road, then the state pays the loan back. We don't pay the loan back.
Okay.
But the in order to, for the state to borrow it, the state, just like we did with Heidi Doyle, the state goes through a borrowing process. And that occurred earlier this year than our request to be included. So they couldn't include our, our earmark money in the request because we were off cycle. So every year they do a borrowing for different projects. And the way that I had left it with the people I talked to, that this is something that could consider next year. If we're on time. And in order to play it safe, given the timelines that they're working with, we would need to make the case for January and then, or February at the latest. And the advantage of doing that is that we now know the, the full actual costs of of what it took to build the road, or at least by the time that period comes around, we'll actually know the cost to do it. And the argument about why it should be an earmark and how it benefits the whole state is that this isn't a road we're building. This is a school we are protecting. And there are kids in this school. And we need not just to maintain the campus, but we have to have safety for the kids. We have to have ready access by emergency vehicles, ambulances, police and so on. And with one road in, if a tree had fallen or if some, somebody had double parked and they can't get in, there could be serious consequences to students, kids, basically children. And the state has made education a priority. We approached this from the point of view that this is related to education. It wasn't to be a transportation grant. It was to be safety of our children in an educational setting. And that argument won enough votes so that it got passed and put into the bill. We shouldn't forget that that perspective on the, the road is making the school safer. This isn't something just for the convenience of people dropping off. It's not just for cosmetics. This is a real bona fide public safety issue. We had testimony from the police chief. We had testimony from the fire chief. There is a real public safety issue that this road is addressing. And that's the state interest in this.
So here's what I would like to do. I want to make a real agenda item out of this. I think it is actually too important and something to do. If we had it, didn't have it, I still don't even fully understand the history of it. And, you know, you're talking a certain strategy that comes up, and I think we did actually have to make a real strategy about this. One of the things I'm thinking is, I, I like your ideas about, you know, selling us an education. It's also an emergency shelter for, for the town. I think that plays into it as well. But maybe a million dollars is the amount people choke on. Maybe we don't ask for a full million. I don't know. I would like to, I'll see, I'll talk to Diane David when it fits in, but I'd like to, before the next, before we have to request it next time, maybe in the next few weeks, have, have an actual agenda item dedicated to this. How does that sound to everyone else?
I think that's good. And I think we should also include Addie Mae Weiss because she's been very good about getting things in on time and working and she was very involved with this process. And I think Addie has a lot of details that and she could really help get this, get this done in a timely manner and, and with the accurate information that we need.
Yes, absolutely. All right. So it's okay. I'd like to kind of end this here. It is too important, I think, just to be a select one report. Yeah, so.
One point is we should include advisory because they, when they give their guidance letter, almost, and George can comment on this, they could even mention this in their guidance. If you're thinking of capital projects, we could identify ones in their planning process to include.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, if there's not any further ado, I'll move on to Time Ministry Report. David, are you pocketed as we are?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to mention a couple of the HR things and personnel actions that we've been working on. And you mentioned a couple. Tom Galvin is the next police chief and in fact, his contract was executed. It's effective November first, twenty twenty-one. The board took care of the assistant collector appointment and the veteran's agent appointment. The town clerk has extended an offer for the assistant town clerk position. And the Conservation Commission has extended an offer for the Conservation Administrator Agent Position. And finally fulfilling the Finance Director Town Accountant Position. I had lined up an outside third party to help the board with that hiring. We've used her before as Mary Beth Bernard. She was retired from Foxborough. And she's helped with processes in the past. So the board can of course decide its level of involvement in that hiring. Or you can just direct me to post the position and bring back the top three to five for the board to conduct public interviews. You know, in a, in a public session. And I was thinking if each board member sent me their thoughts on the, on their important things that they would like to see in the process, then I could compile those so that we could have some sort of draft scope for Mary Beth Bernard to work from. And the date that I told her is that I'd like to have it posted by October first.
My point was though, David, that we wanted to actually look at the actual job description and the job. But before we go down the scope and hiring a consultant, I mean, we just had a very successful hiring by using a committee of town members. I just want to make sure you're listening to what we're saying, that that's, we want to look at the scope of the job before you look at the scope of just hiring that same position that we already have listed.
That has been talked about by different bodies and for months and it just hasn't moved. So I don't know if you want an agenda item for the select board to discuss it, or if you want to refer it to.
We should have an agenda item next time so we can get it actually moving, not just talking about moving.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do think it's worthy because there is some thought about, we've, and you and I, Dave have talked about it, and I think others have spoken about, do we restructure that position, you know, and we've talked about that a little bit. So maybe actually crack open the bylaw that created that position. Look at the existing job description and kind of roll up our sleeves on that one there. That's all I'm thinking. So yeah, I would also like to make an agenda item on this, just to kind of get a more official opinion with it, with that one. The other ones, I think you're in a good direction.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, very good. All right, if there's not anything else, I will, um, I will move to adjourn the open session portion of this meeting. Because I, because the chair declare that executive session is warranted for the agenda items as previously written to the record by the town administrator. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Paul?
I'm going to vote aye with the condition that I have a chance to have a short break to.
And I just want to add one other condition. We're going to have some people who are going to be in the waiting room who are here for different executive sessions. So that includes in the the item two on the Silverwood Farm, Courtney Eck will represent Conservation because they weren't, Conservation was not notified that there was going to be an executive session on that issue. So neither the chair nor the vice chair of Concom are available. So Courtney, who's a member, will join for that. And then for the library, Mary Moore usually joins that also. I've proposed that we include Stephen's side because as we're getting into more financial issues, I sort of feel like having an advisory person at least aware would be understanding what we're looking at and would be useful. And, and because of what we talked about, the financing, if Heidi would like to join that, I'd like to extend the opportunity to hers, but you'll have to wait, you have to be bored for however long the earlier sessions take. So my apologies.
Can I suggest the, the session that has the lawyer who we're paying be done first so we can?
They all do, Paul.
I think all three do. As we talk about switching, I'm going to seem unfair. I think, I think I'm going to keep, I'm going to recommend we keep the audits on there. Then if the council coming for one and two, it's going to be quick. And the council coming three is going to be a little more discussion. So we talked about switching, but yeah, Paul, this is one of those rare cases. All three have counsel coming.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So I believe I had a motion and a second. I think I, Jeff voted, yes, Marion voted, yeah. Paul wanted five minutes and that's cool. We'll do that. And then, but you voted against, how about you, George? How do you vote?
Yes. We keep it as quick as possible to.
I'm tempted to vote no and just end the meeting, but no, I'll vote yes as well. All right. So I guess if Jeff, if you could control the attendees for who's appropriate for the, was it Zabarski?
Yep, yep.
And if you could turn off the recording, please as well, whoever has control of that.